Call to order. The Monday, October 20th, 2025 Commissioners Meeting. If you would, folks. But let me, let me. I guess let me have a call, I better have a call to order first and get a, see who's here. So, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Commissioner Howard.
Please call the roll.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Booker.
Here. Okay, now, we can stand for the prayer from the county attorney, Mr. Grady.
Grady.
Man, I'm having trouble this morning.
Sir.
You know who you are.
I do, yes, sir.
And then we'll do the pleasurable easy that so remains standing.
Almighty and eternal Father, Creator of heaven and earth, we come before you with praise and trust as your children. You have given us laws to guide our lives so that we may flourish as individuals and as a society. Bless and guide the representatives of our county, that they may enact laws which are just and righteous for the good of all. If we have failed, grant us the wisdom and humility to pursue solutions for the betterment of our people. We thank you for being the foundation of our county, knowing that without you, we are powerless. Holy Spirit, enkindle in our lawmakers the fire of your love. May their work be devoted to truth, life, and peace pursued with unity and selflessness. May this county be a beacon of light for our country today and always, through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We welcome you all this morning and hope you have a, having a good day. We would appreciate it if everyone would silence their phone so that not to have an interruption while we're conducting our meeting. Commissioners, you have in front of you the agenda for today. Are there any changes, corrections, deletions? If not, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The first item on our agenda today is the consent agenda. And I will just quickly run through what is on it. The minutes for the October 6th regular session. Tax releases and refunds, social services, the Sunshine Center program, budget amendment. Social services, senior services, and Sunshine Center programs to roll forward unspent donations from 2425 budget amendment. The U.S. Forest Service Weather Station Memorandum of Understanding. A proclamation recognizing November 6th to November 11th. As Veterans Service Week in Craven County. And we thank all the veterans in our county who served our country. And lastly, a resolution honoring Lowvee Wallace Singleton. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. The next item, number two, is emergency services. Approval of franchise for non-emergency transport. Mr. Kite.
Good morning, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. As you're aware, through the Craven County Ambulance Franchise Ordinance, we have position, four positions available. Currently, only two of those positions are filled, which leaves us two vacancies for the ambulance positions for the private nonprofit and for the convalescent transport services. For several months, we've been working through an application for franchise from Caroline Medical Transport. And we processed it in-house, the staff has gone through the application. And we've also finally moved on to the EMS Advisory Council. EMS Advisory Council has made a recommendation to you to grant the franchise upon your blessings today. And I'm here today to present that and have representatives here from Caroline. If you have any additional questions for the EMS, far as their intention to operate within Craven County services and services they wish to provide. Currently, they're going to be at the basic level for convalescent non-emergency, but they have future plans to be able to advance and move forward in the level of care and also play a part in the Craven County EMS system.
Okay, anyone have questions on this subject?
I do.
Okay.
I'm curious. So they're going to provide services in Craven County. If someone needs transport to one of the Greenville facilities or perhaps one of the facilities in Durham, is that something that they do?
That's up to the individual providers, that, you know, that's a contract relationship between the client and the company. But what the franchise does is says, basically, if you pick a patient up at point A and deliver them to point B, and it's within Craven County, then you must be franchised under Craven County government. Currently, as it stands, a unit could come from Charlotte and pick somebody up in Craven and take them somewhere else. So certainly those providers within the county can take patients outside the county as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have a question?
No, I move to approve.
Okay, got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second? Do we need a roll call? We do not. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number two, Kelly Walker Cuswell, CARTS. Kelly, welcome.
Hey, thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
We have two items. Our first is requesting approval to apply for the fiscal year 2526 State Maintenance Assistance Program. This is SMAP, and it is a state-funded transportation program that's administered by the North Carolina Department of Transportation with the intention to provide operating assistance to urban, small urban, and urban regional fixed route and commuter bus systems. Eligible use of the funds are limited to the system's operating cost. On September 29th, we were notified that we were allocated $130,920 for this fiscal year, which is the same amount as the previous fiscal year. The application deadline is October 24th, and we have to use the funds by June 30th of 2026. A public hearing is not required, and the SMAP funding cannot exceed the amount of the local match for CARTS's operating expenses. We are requesting approval to apply for the $130,920 in SMAP funds, and a copy of the application budget has been provided.
Okay, we're being asked to authorize our staff to proceed with this. Are there questions? There are no questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All opposed. Everybody says yes?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Our second item is for, to approval to apply for the fiscal year 2526 Rural Operating Assistance Program or RAP. It is also state-funded transportation grant that's administered by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. It consolidates the Elderly and Disabled Transportation Program or EDTAP for all areas of Craven County, the employment transportation for all areas of Craven County, and the Rural General Public or RGP for the rural areas of Craven County in one application. For each county within the CART service area is responsible for making its own RAP application. Also, on November 29th, we were notified that we have been allocated $100,276 for EDTAP, $19,645 for employment, and $113,325 for RGP. So the total fiscal year 26 allocation is $253,246. A public hearing is not required. In addition to submitting the application, a certified statement by the county manager and finance officer is required, and the application deadline is also October 24th. Copies of the RAP application and certified statements were provided.
Okay, once again, we're being asked to proceed with the application process. Are there any questions? No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next item would be our sheriff, Sheriff Hughes.
Morning, Sheriff, Commissioners.
Morning.
I've got two items on the agenda this morning for your consideration, both budget amendments. The first has to do with our COSAP funds. That's a multi-year grant, three-year grant, we're awarded in '23. It plays a big part in our, how we deal with opioid addiction and stuff of that nature in our jail. Also in this, I'm asking, in these funds, what's included is a part-time reentry coordinator position that we found is going to be crucial to continue our efforts. The total grant, three-year grant, was for $970,757. To date, we have used $469,881.99, leaving just $508,75,001 remaining. Of that, we're asking for $240,162 in this budget amendment to add additional grant funding, obviously, to continue our services that we have in place without delay and to include this part-time reentry position.
Okay, any questions for the sheriff on this?
Just clarification, the contract services that you're talking about, is this the Hope Recovery?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, that pays for, I think, nine of the beds, I believe is what.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yes, sir.
And the county funds the other beds.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Okay, you got a second item.
Yes, sir, this is for employee payout with two members of the office retiring and leaving. The amount of funds, we are looking to replenish this because it's so early in the budget process. One is for $52,960.84. I believe the other one is for $45,188.77. This covers holiday and vacation pay for the two individuals that have left.
Okay. Other questions for the sheriff on this one?
I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second a motion.
Second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Okay, they both asked. Do you have anything for us this morning? Anything you need to share or enlighten us on?
Um, as many of you probably saw, we just had another big drug and weapon roundup here in the county. We've removed quite a few dealers and traffickers off the street, and once again, that's making a significant impact. And the credit goes to the men and women of the office for just doing an outstanding job.
I like the statement after you, your press release, when you did the statement, you said, we've already, or somebody said, "We've already started on the next one."
Oh, yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, so we're not, this isn't like we're going to do, now we're done for the year.
No, no, this is an ongoing operation.
Well.
We just, we just have different names.
Yeah, different people, different names. It's good that they know that you're, you're already working on the next one.
The next one will probably be something along the line of Christmas cheer, maybe something like that. And, you know, we want to, we just want the criminals to know that we're keeping an eye on them and that we hadn't forgotten about them.
That's what we need to do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Water Department, funding for Gethsemane Christian Church water, road, water main relocation.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Um, North Carolina Department of Transportation is in the process of paving Gethsemane Church Road, the secondary road program. And we have approximately 3,900 linear feet of four-inch water line and 950 feet of two-inch water line that is in conflict. The North Carolina Department of Transportation will thoroughly reimburse Craven County for the cost of this work, and they're also going to be reimbursing us for administrative inspection costs related to this construction contract. And so we're just asking for the approval of the budget amendment of $399,567 for the relocation of the water main along Gethsemane Church Road.
So, we are responsible to relocate the water line?
We are responsible for this one, yes, sir.
And then they will reimburse us for that cost?
Yes, sir, they will.
Questions?
I had one. Four-inch water main and two-inch water main.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that adequate?
For that road, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
For those that may not know, this is right off the Tusculor overpass to the left. These citizens here have been wanting this road.
Pay for a long time.
Pay for a long time. Chad's been in the mix of this, Don bungard after years.
Yeah, it's been talked about for a while.
It's a, it's a big day for, for these.
That's great. There aren't a lot of homes on that road.
There's not, but there are.
Doesn't matter. The people that are on it, I, I.
They need it.
We've, we've heard from them, so this is a good thing.
Good thing.
Very good. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Elliot. Yes, sir. I wanted to.
Take this opportunity, I do have our new Water Services Director here this morning, Chris Mullis. And I wanted to introduce Chris, if you'd stand up. Chris has been with us just under a month. Came to us from Georgetown, South Carolina, where he was Water Services Director there for the city. And we're happy to have him in, and he's learning Craven County over the last month and jumping right in with Elliot and the team out there. So just want to take an opportunity. Chris, I don't know if you want to say anything, or y'all have questions of Chris, but.
Chris, first of all, welcome from all of us.
Yes, so much. I just want to say it's been a pleasure to work with Craven County so far. It's, it's been an exciting endeavor, and I'm looking forward to really progressing with the county.
Very good, well, welcome.
Welcome.
We appreciate having you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, item number six is the Health Department, use of balance appropriation. Mr. Harrelson, is he here? I don't see him. So we'll go on to item number seven. Mr. Diggan. Good morning.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Mr. Let me speak today. So today, we, I'd like to talk to you about the Cove City Library. The library's out in Cove City, serves the citizens of western Craven County. And if you've been out there, you know that the driving situation, parking has been limited. It's difficult to get bus, school buses in and out through the narrow pathway there. And they only have roughly 10 to 15 spots at any given time available, and that's for staff and for patrons. So what we are proposing is a lease of property adjacent to the building to build a driveway and additional parking. Lease a 50-foot wide portion on the eastern boundary of the parcel would allow for 15 additional parking spots and additional access to East Sunset Boulevard. This would allow for a safer, more convenient, and more robust access for residents. And then future additions to the library, if they are ever made down the road, would necessitate this addition anyway. So the proposed terms of the lease are a 25-year lease pending January, with an annual payment of $2,500, with a 5% increase each fifth lease year. You'll notice in the budget amendment, that's for the amount of $44,415. Craig can speak to that probably better than I can, but that's just because we have to show the full cost of the lease term upfront, so.
For the whole time.
For the whole, the whole term. So I'm requesting that you approve the lease agreement with Dread Mitchell Rental Properties and approve the related budget amendment.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to thank staff for working with Mr. Mitchell on this. It's very much needed. It will help us significantly. If you look at the picture that was included there, I mean, we have very limited parking. And on days that they have, you know, seniors come in or schoolchildren, they have to use the church parking lot down the road to park there. So I would appreciate and ask for your support of this, if I could. Also, Eric, I fail to, just disclaimer, Dread Mitchell is a distant cousin of mine. And when I say distant, I mean, you know, he's not first or second cousin, but I just want to make sure that there is no conflict of interest.
There's no conflict, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right, that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Everybody's a cousin.
Everybody's a cousin.
Welcome to Craven County.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say I frequent the area often as well, and I completely agree with Jason.
You want to make that motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve this.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Excuse me, Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Shane. Mr. County Manager, do we want to just hold the health one for the next meeting, or how do you want to do that?
Let's, I know Mr. Harrelson will be here during the work session. I would say just add this as a second item in the work session to be held at that time, so just table it for the moment.
Okay.
If that works for the board.
That's fine. Okay. Okay. Okay, then, item number eight. Would be appointments. And Commissioners, note that under pending, we have an appointment for the ABC Board, the Planning Board, Clean Sweep Committee, 70 Corridor, HAVLOCK Board of Adjustment, Juvenile Crime Prevention, and Voluntary Agricultural District. Under the ABC Board, do we have a recommendation there?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we would appoint Mr. Jack White to fill this seat. It would probably be for a short-term basis, but I think at this time, I would, I offer him to be the nominee.
Okay.
Second a motion.
Mr. White has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for that seat? If not, Mr. White will be appointed by acclamation. Number two is the Fire Tax Commissioners Board. Mr. Charles Dudley has been mentioned. Would someone like to nominate him?
I would make that nomination for Mr. Dudley.
Okay, Mr. Dudley has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Dudley will be appointed by acclamation. And lastly, under the Vanceboro Craven County Library Board, Susan Mills. We appointed her to fill a vacated midterm seat, and that expires in November. She is seeking reappointment for her first full term.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Ms. Susan Mills.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Ms. Mills will be appointed by acclamation. Notice that upcoming, we have a Recreation Advisory Council appointment. We've held off on that until they can confirm that they're going to change their appointment terms. We'll hold on that for the next. Next item is Mr. Grady for our county attorney's report.
Commissioners, good morning. I have two items for your consideration today, both involving surplus property owned by the county jointly with the city of New Bern. The first parcel is located at 841 Pavy Avenue, and it has a parcel ID number of 8007095. The initial offer amount is $5,400. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure together were $6,064.65. And the tax value of the property is $5,400. The city of New Bern has already given its initial approval, and I would suggest that the board do likewise so we can get it out for upset bids.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion approved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
The second item is also an initial offer for property located at 841 Bloomfield Street with a parcel ID number of 8007124. The initial bid amount is $6,000. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure together were $4,176.40. And the tax value of the property is $6,000. As with the first parcel, the city of New Bern has given its initial approval, and I would recommend that this board do likewise so we can get it out for upset bids.
Okay, have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harrelson.
I've had ample time at night, y'all are moving this morning. We have some, an agenda item for the Health Department for several items. This is basically revenues over expenses for last fiscal year. About, well, usually earlier than this, I'll come every year and request things. There's quite a few lists, things listed on the item, quite a few items listed. We have things requested by maintenance for the animal shelter. We have a contract, some of the new things here, credentialing and maintenance with the Vannum Health. And rate, it says contract negotiations, but it's, it really rate negotiations for our third-party contracts with insurance companies such as Blue Cross, Blue Shield, United, Cigna. Those haven't been really, the rates haven't increased, and they haven't really been negotiated. So we found an outside entity that does this, and they're out of Louisville, Kentucky. And we think that that will pay dividends if we can get those rates increased for us. Credentialing, we now have eight providers, if we count our behavioral health provider, no, nine if we count the behavioral health provider. And taking this work off of some of my billing staff would be a great help as far as credentialing. A lot of your healthcare providers today are outsourcing this as well. Those are some of the new things. The other things are equipment like furniture, blood draw chairs for our clinical lab, dental equipment, an ultrasound machine for our high-risk maternity clinic, vision screeners, exam tables, EKG machines, just equipment for various clinical areas across the department.
Okay.
And the total is $216,079 is the request.
Okay, Board, we're being asked to approve a budget amendment. You have $216,079. Are there questions for Mr. Harrelson?
That seems like you're going to do a lot with that $200,000. Do you have any other ultrasound machines, or will this be your first one?
This will be the first one. We, we wanted to do this earlier, and it's just dating ultrasounds because it's, it's an access issue for our patients to get that service. So, but we are now, we have two full-time providers, and there's some training that needs to be done in order to utilize that. So we feel like we're at a good place now to do it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that approves this.
Okay.
Second.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Would you give us an update on where we're at with our HAVLOCK facility?
Yes, sir. We're almost at completion on the facility. There, there's really no disruption to patient services. We're in an exam room with our lab right now, so there's some finishing touches on the lab and a few other things. Now we have moved on to a second contractor to come in and actually finish up the work. And I think that they'll be probably finished looking over Assistant County Manager probably within a month, Mr. Jean?
That should be ample enough time.
Okay. And then, yeah, everything will be in place, and I'll be back this afternoon, the work session. I promise I won't be late, I'll be early. We have some other things I think will really be beneficial to the folks in the southern end of the county.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. County Manager, you're up next.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, you're going to hear a lot from me here shortly, but I did want to remind the Board, we will, when you finish your Commissioner reports, we will recess for about 20 minutes, and then we'll enter back into work session, whatever time that comes out to, to discuss a variety of items. I believe there's seven of them today, so look forward to working with you then.
Thank you. Last item before we take a break would be Commissioners' reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go, I'll go shortly. November 10th, I'm having another town hall in my district with the hopes it'll be successful and as engaging as Ms. Bee's town halls are. I always enjoy hearing her reports. She does a great job.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Chairman, I got one thing. Bryant's Chapel AM Design Church in Cove City will. Bryant's Chapel AM Design Church in Cove City will be having their two-hundred anniversary this coming weekend. I'd like to ask if the Board would to let's just pass, I know we don't have nothing in front of us, but allow the Chairman to sign a letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners just recognizing their two-hundred years of service to our community.
Second.
I'm sure we can do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody agreed? We will, we'll get a letter out to them. Is that this coming weekend?
Yep, so there's a festivity starting Friday night, so if I could, could get it for that.
Very good. Commissioner Hunt?
Yes, Chairman, I have a couple of things. Former Commissioner George Liner asked me to invite all the veterans and all the county commissioners to attend the Veterans Council of Craven County's Annual Veterans Luncheon, and that's to be held November eighth from eleven hundred to thirteen hundred at Temple's Point Church. The council wants to thank all of our veterans for their service, tarnation into our community. This year is extra special as we celebrate the Navy's two-hundred and fiftieth birthday and the world's finest fighting force, the United States Marine Corps' two-hundred and fiftieth birthday. So I hope everybody can attend, I'll be there, of course.
Go Navy.
You want to repeat who those birthdays are?
The United States Navy and the world's finest fighting force, the United States Marine Corps.
I thought that's what you said.
Yes.
Okay.
Additionally, we'll be having a meet and greet with our esteemed sheriff this coming Thursday in Havelock at the Mucho Bueno. That starts at five-thirty, everyone's invited to attend that. And congratulations to the Harlow Volunteer Firefighters Auxiliary for taking first place for booth decorations and second place in People's Choice Award at the Chili Festival held this past weekend in Havelock. And lastly, I'd like to say that I attended a meet and greet with VA Mental Health Care in the Havelock Clinic the week before last. If anybody didn't know, we have VA Mental Health Care provided, two providers in Havelock. You can be seen virtually, or you can be seen in person, and the first four weeks, they